I need to hear. That's what we were looking for. All right, we'll call the order, the city council meeting for North Bend on August first, two thousand and twenty-three here in City Hall of Chambers. The, please confirm the role.
All council members are present with the exception of council member Colin, your honor.
Thank you. And let's go to the flag salute, please.
I have states of America. Public, which is saying. One evening. God. He is law, the repeating justice for all.
You, everyone. Before I jump to the consent agenda, I wanted to make one announcement. If you somehow have been asleep at the wheel, today is election day. You have until eight o'clock tonight, I believe. So if you're here and haven't voted, please leave. With that consent agenda, do I have a motion? Second. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries and it is unanimous. We'll move right to citizen comments. If you are a member of the public and wish to address city council, you're here in chambers, you'll be moving to the podium. If you are online, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine. You will be called upon. You'll have up to three minutes to speak, starting with your name and address for the record. Anyone here in chambers?
North Bend. I'm just a little shorter than I realized. So the last time I was here, I told you I wanted to talk about art. A new art festival in North Bend, and it's a mirrored event between North Bend and Snoqualmie. I'm in collaboration with the Railway Museum, the Snoqualmie Arts Commission, and North Bend Art and Industry. So we are moving forward. It's going to be September twenty-third. We already have two of our three bands booked. We've got food trucks. We're starting to do outreach for artists and artist booths. We are going to be at the North Bend Railroad Park, William Henry Taylor Park. And then, of course, Snoqualmie will be at their community park. And again, we're mirroring the event, so they too will have two food trucks. They'll have a couple of bands. They'll have artists and will have a art project at both ends that can be married together to show how we connect our Snoqualmie Valley community. So I wanted to make sure that you knew about it, and I want to extend invitations to all of you because remember, it's the first ever that I know of in North Bend. And with that, I'm of course looking for support from the city to help make this event happen. There's a number of little logistic things. It's going to be a very low dollar item. Low budget festival. We're expecting between four and six hundred people. I will tell you, the artists and the community are already giving us really strong feedback, and we just started to strong positive feedback. We just started to promote it. So with that, I want to open it up for any questions about the festival and then have one other item. Questions? All right, then I just want you to give you a heads up that the next time that I talk, I want to talk about an art installation in front of two oh nine Main Avenue South by the River Trail. Between the River Trail and the Railroad Bed. We have a plan to make kind of a fun, interactive art exhibit, and I want to show it to you and get your opinion because there's going to be some coordination with the city. It's on city property, but it also has some railway rights that we're working through. So just something to look at as the train comes in or as people are walking and biking down that trail. And that's it. Any questions? Thank you for having me.
Thanks, Deb. Anyone else here in chambers? No one moving forward? Do we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
Right, thank you very much. Move on to announcements, presentations, and appointments. And I see item number ten, A B twenty-three dash zero nine three. This is the appointment of the city attorney. Look who's next to it. It's my pleasure to be introducing tonight new city attorney that we're proposing, Kendra Rosenberg with Kenyon Deason offer. As everyone here knows, Lisa Marshall has been serving as our city attorney, ably for
A year and a half.
A year and a half now. And as her portfolio is filling up, they were able to attract Andrew back to the firm. She spent the last six years as the in-house attorney for the city of Auburn, Washington. Either that, she served the cities as a legal counsel while employed with Kenyon Deason. She has decided to rejoin the firm and is an available attorney for us to meet our demands of legal services as her primary duties, and we're very pleased about. I'm gonna have Lisa here do a little more of an introduction in a moment. Did just again, just as a reminder to council as well as the public, we are in the middle of process of receiving requests for proposals for city attorney services for twenty-four and beyond. So this is unrelated to that. But Kendra will serve as their city attorney in the interim. So this can be accomplished with the motion in your packet. Lisa.
Thank you, Mayor. As many of you know, because you've met Kendra already, Kendra Rosenberg has decided to return to Kenyon Deason after about five or six years serving the city of Auburn. I knew Kendra before she left for Auburn was very, very impressed. She is an excellent attorney and she's an excellent human being, and I know you will really enjoy working with her and you are in very capable hands. So I welcome Kendra back to the firm and turn it back over to you. Would you like, Kendra, would you like to say a few words before?
Evening, Mayor, Council.
I'll pull that a little closer to you.
Thank you. Thanks for this tip. I'm happy to be here this evening. I just wanted to provide a brief introduction. I know you have other business matters to consider. I have been practicing municipal law for over ten years. I've practiced in the areas of H R related issues, employment and labor law, land use. Know that that's thing that North Bend is experiencing a lot of right now in a growing and thriving city. Advice on economic development issues, police-related issues, and some of the other fundamental building blocks of a city. So it'd be my pleasure to serve the city of North Bend, and I really appreciate the support of Lisa and the firm of Kenyon Deason.
Secution and H R. Pretty well-rounded. Council, any questions for Kendra before I ask for a motion? Anything that you'd like?
First off, Lisa, thank you very much for your service to the city. We sure appreciate everything that you've done for us. Been an outstanding city attorney and always available. We don't always agree with your opinion, but unfortunately you are the final word on that. And that was probably the nicest letdown of you dumping us as I've ever heard. But I'm very pleased to meet Kendra, and I think she's going to do a fantastic job, and I'm looking forward to maybe getting to work with her a little bit more as we move on. And well, that once again, I just wanted to say thank you very much for all your hard work.
Lisa, thank you. I'll piggyback what Ross said. I thank you for all your hard efforts all last year and difficult challenges along the way. Much appreciated. And Kendra, welcome aboard. Forward to get to know you and what the future holds. Thank you for joining us.
With that. Motion? Going it to the group.
Motion to approve A B twenty-three dash nine three, confirming the marital appointment of Kendra Rosenberg, Kenyon Deason, E L L C as city attorney. Second.
Motion in a second, I'm Mr. Elwood. Home favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? She carries. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Kendra, welcome. Lisa, thank you again for all of your service. I suspect we will see you occasionally, but not as often. That we will be moving to introductions. So item eleven, A B twenty-three dash zero nine four. This is a motion authorizing contract with F C S Group Fiscal Sustainability Analysis. Mr. Miller.
Yes, Your Honor and council members, this has been before you before. You've seen after the study earlier. We've been spending the past few months having the Economic Development Action Plan adopted, which is kind of the basis for starting this. And in refining the scope of work for this to respond to the success we had with the water supply agreement. And so what we have before you is you have a study that's being proposed by F C S and the consultants are here. Todd Chase and Martin Shaw, and they will probably give a bit of a presentation to give you a little bit more of a flavor of what's in this. But we're in need of a long-term financial analysis that looks at costs and revenues to assess the financial sustainability of services over time. And if this will look at our comprehensive plan, it will look at the development that is left to be done within the city. It will project our costs over a substantial period of time for both operation and maintenance and for our debt service. And take a look at those obligations with respect to how the cash flow will operate over a period of time given projected development. It will also look at various scenarios. It will look at different development rates. It will look at different situations that might retard development for a while while infrastructure is being constructed. And during that entire period of time, it will have an eye toward what our ongoing operation and maintenance costs and our infrastructure costs will be our fixed costs. And compare those with the revenues that are anticipated to come in with the rate of development that we project. This will be kind of a marriage between the Community Development Department and their best guess on how development will move forward. Given the number of active applications and the history of applications. And it will also be, on the other side, a public works project. Take a look at the requirements to search those areas. What infrastructure is in place? What needs to be provided? Much of the work you've already done, a lot of the heavy lifting you've already done. You've financed the sewer plant. You've started the Meadowbrook U-Lid. You've got the water supply agreement. So a lot of the constraints that we looked at a year and a half ago are removed. But we still need to have an accurate picture, and I know that our finance committee has been interested in reports of how are we doing now and how will we do in the future? And this is going to provide that kind of a look into the future. So we would appreciate your support on this. This did go to the Community and Economic Development Committee as it was a project that came out of Mark Knoll's job in economic development. And they reviewed the contract and received an overview and presentation from the F C S Group on July eighteenth and recommended that this be placed on the main agenda. So as you will recall, F C S does all of our rate studies and is probably the most well-informed as to the number of customers we have. What the growth rate has been, what their projections are, our rate study, so they have a very firm foundation to begin this study. So be happy to answer any questions and would like to have Todd Chase and Martin Shaw be a resource to provide information to you and answer your questions.
Dave, did you want, was there a presentation they wanted to give or they're here for question and answer? So I think we should have that before we open up your question. Do you want to come?
Thank you for including us tonight on your agenda. I don't know if this presentation is up live quite yet, but while it's getting booted up, I can give you a little background on on this approach and our team. My name's Todd Chase. I'm a principal and co-owner of F C S Group. We've been working with your with your staff of the last few years on utility rate work, rate modeling. And we hope to leverage some of that work into this project to help you get a better handle on your on your kind of implications of growth the city, different ways to fund infrastructure as you grow. So that some extent development will help pay for itself. And down the road, existing residents don't have to necessarily pick up the tab for a future facilities that are going to be needed to accommodate that growth. I've been doing this for about thirty-eight years. Then with F C S sixteen years, and before that I was planning manager with O-Tac. Ex- engineers, planners. And so we're based in Redmond, Washington. We also have offices in Spokane, Portland, Oregon, and Denver, Colorado. And so we do get to work around the country and parts of Canada on this type of work. So hopefully we can lend some of that experience to some of the creative solutions we come up for this project to me up with on this project. Martin has been with us eight years. He's about thirty years of experience in the public sector as well. And he's been with the budget offices in Redmond, Bellevue, as well as King County and the Washington State Legislature. So he's got a great background for budgeting and fiscal sustainability work. So between the two of us, you'll see a lot of us, we propose to do these four meetings with council over the next several months as we dive deep into this project and and understand you know, growth potential. Basically, there's three parts to this study. I know you're you're working on the comp plan, and there's some assumptions for that that need to be fed into the models that we have to the degree you add five hundred units or six hundred units every ten years or more or less. You know, depending on what the market would support and what your infrastructure decides to support will impact how much revenue the city will have to accommodate your existing debt as well as to take on future projects. Whether they're pay-as-you-go projects or they're public-private partnerships with developers or they're financed. We really want to get a handle of the growth potential for the city. And then working with public works and looking at your master plans for transportation, water, sewer, parks, et cetera. Understand what infrastructure is yet to be built. And whether that infrastructure would be publicly delivered or privately delivered makes a difference in both costs as well as the commitment that the city would have to make or could make through a cost basis for a development impact fee, for example. Or for a local improvement district. And we'll talk about different funding techniques that we've used in other cities to pay for growth. So the funding is a big component of it. We have some other parts of the project that we've proposed. Talk about that in a minute. But I think what's important about growth and we're working throughout the region, and we realize that King County, Seattle region is one of the fastest-growing areas in the United States. It used to be. Migration patterns, climate change, jobs, you know, that seems like it's certainly pushing development in this direction from from all over the U.S. And now we're feeling it in this region. Snoqualmie Valley region. Average home prices are now pushing up towards a million. We're seeing it. Far-flung parts of the North area and Arlington, we're doing this type of work. Shoreline. This is like that are starting to really boom as well. And the all these cities are not really don't really have the staff to handle the level of development, level of growth that we're seeing come their way. So this is an opportunity to be proactive about what is market supportable, what is is compatible with the community? And how does that translate into either we call infill versus new development versus redevelopment? And so there's different scenarios that we can we can model. I don't know if you've ever heard of SimCity. Used to be a game my kids would play, but it's a lot like that. You know, you want to understand if you add more jobs, what's it going to do to your tax base? If you add more single-family homes, how's that going to demand? And the demands are going to put on your fire and work lease. And so this is an opportunity to understand the level of service that's required to handle future growth. And what infrastructure is needed? What type of public facilities, buildings, or capital investments required? You really have a good handle for that. And then how do we fund it? There's lots of different ways. We're going to explore several sources. This is a laundry list here. The the first six items are basically already in place. Day, your general fund. We certainly will have greater demands on your general fund as you add people to the community. We're going to potentially have opportunities to work with developers. That can be through special assessments or development agreements. That can help pay for all kinds of public facilities and what we found is that privately-delivered infrastructure is typically fifteen to twenty percent less costly than publicly delivered due to different wage rates that are required and different costs for timelines and review processes, demand on the city staff and all that. So you know, we'll have a conversation about what projects are likely to be privately built. This is publicly built. Then we can look at your impact fees. Development impact fees are a great way to help pay for new roads, arcs, pathways, sewer, water, farm. We can size those fees for sub-areas. They don't have to be citywide. Their fees that existing residents never pay. It's typically just a fee on the homes. We can size those fees by home size as well. So that somebody building a eight-hundred-foot cottage doesn't pay the same as somebody building a thirty-five-hundred-square-foot estate. So that's something we can also do, do this type of work. Utility fees, we already have a good handle on utility fees. But we can supplement utility fees with what's called a local utility L I D, which is a supplemental rate in a certain area that benefits from, say, a pump station or from a trunk line or some some facility that you're building just to handle that particular development. Transportation benefit districts, you already have one, I believe. We can look at that. We can, there's different ways. You can act on fees to a transportation benefit district. They require a vote of the people, though, that are in the impacted area of that district. If we're going to do a special funding source tied to that, we can do supplemental real estate excise taxes. Another source of funding we've used. And then into the special funds. Talk about a levy lid lift, which is a publicly voted on property tax that may or may not be supported by the city. But there are other techniques that don't require a public vote, like the tax increment area. This is a fairly new concept. It was approved by the legislature in two thousand, twenty-twenty-one. We're just adopting one now in Arlington. Have one in Vancouver. ASCO has one. So few cities are getting behind this. And what it is, basically, it's a way to capture the tax increment, pretty tax value of new development and use the mill rates that are generated by that, not just the city mill rate, but you also capture other mill rates in that district to pay for improvements in that district. They can be roads, sewer, water. You can use it for writing down the cost of affordable housing to pay the impact fees for eat-restricted affordable housing. I'm fairly flexible funding source. Cities are beginning to discover in Washington. We've been using it in Oregon, Colorado, many years. Local improvement districts and reimbursement districts or other funding techniques, very locals. Like I mentioned, trunk line or a pump station. That is where we would basically create a special district around that improvement and have property owners within that district basically agree to pay the special assessment. We tried to get at least fifty-one percent of the affected property owners be behind it before we bring it to the council. But that's a technique that can be used as well to pay for the specific improvements. And then, of course, we can, we can ask you to to issue additional debt without public vote. And that would need to be ideally supported by one of these revenue sources that we've identified. We're going to go through all these. Some of these are for capital, some of these for operations. But through this process, we hope to come up with a locally preferred funding strategy that the council could depending on the level of growth we're going to have. I'm going to ask Martin to kind of dive a little bit more into the approach and and your existing funding, just so you can see of our thinking about how we approach this project.
Good evening, council. For the record, Martin Shaw, Senior Project Manager, F C S Group. And as Todd mentioned, he was part of our work project or work program for you. We do a deeper dive on your revenue sources. Obviously, your city is funded, as you can see on this chart, by a series of of source of tax revenues or just which is on sales taxes followed by property taxes and business and utility taxes. This is a fairly typical revenue portfolio for cities. One of the things that we'll be taking a look at for you, of course, is looking at sources of tax revenues that you have currently and where potentially remaining capacities that you may have available to fund capital improvements to advance your economic development. We also have other sources of revenues, and as you can see, we've identified those for you where and what parts of your city government that goes towards funding. For example, your utility rates goes towards your water, seaweed and storm utilities, your impact fees that goes towards your Fund One Oh Six for your C I P. You have a U L I D for redemption of past the utility bonds, and that goes to your C I P as well. And then a series of licenses and permits support your your streets programs as well as your solid waste operations and then transfers to your C I P from from operations for funding your major. We're taking the comprehensive view of your major sources of revenues and identifying. So what sources, what are your main sources of revenues to fund your needs and what are some of the preferred sources by you for the city council? Rooms or a task plan? This is outlined in the scope of work that you all have in front of you. Way we've outlined this is after project kickoff with city staff, we, the first two tasks is to re-understand. So where are we? What's the, what's the current state of affairs and what's the gap to because to where we want to go as a city? Then after that, would work with your staff in terms of identifying development opportunities? And what is the cost associated with that infrastructure? Then, once we have that foundational information that really leads into the technical analysis, which includes a general fund financial forecast, the revenues for utilities. And then, again, as I mentioned earlier, identifying a financial strategy for closing that gap. Existing revenues versus what revenues we do need on your future infrastructure. And then, as Todd mentioned, after we complete that, we'll gather economic development model, and then we'll return and go through the hour results of our analysis with you all and answer questions and then help the city construct a long-term infrastructure natural strategy. Anyway, that concludes our presentation. It can answer your questions and can give you a broad sense as to yes, our proposed scope of work.
Also clarifying questions either to Dave or to our consultants before we go to public comment. Your line back. Your line back.
Thank you. I appreciate the scope of what you're looking at doing. Certainly important information for us to consider moving forward. We've been exceptionally successful in this community in obtaining one-time money, which I know is not sustainable and not really documentable on a regular basis for budgeting purposes. But we've had a lot of success in obtaining grants, special funding for projects, and we hope to continue to do so. Will that model, will there be any sort of identification and or, you know, available funding sources that we can obtain or send our fundraisers to try and obtain certain pots of money to, to help fund this project?
Yeah, I, I mean, we'll have to amend the scope to make, make it clear that we can add that. Because I think having basically we have tables that we update, whether we're talking about roads, water, sewer, housing. There's all these new grants now that we could go after the city. Some old programs too. Some have windows that close on certain dates and some are just a rolling application cycle. So yeah, I'd be happy to include that in the, in the scope. I don't think it's a costly item. It's just something we could do.
I appreciate that because we have been able to aim millions of dollars to help with some of the infrastructure improvements that will help facilitate whatever growth is coming, either commercial or residential. And, and those, those funds are certainly important and I'd like to see them at least recognized going forward in any opportunities that you know of. We should be pursuing that maybe we aren't currently. We'd like to avail ourselves of that.
And I'll just add that, you know, having a new funding technique or funding resource is the opportunity to have a local match, leverage that non-local funding, whether it's state or federal.
Brendan.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you, Marvin. That was a good concise presentation, which I appreciate. And I'm actually excited about understanding our fiscal sustainability. Just a couple of quick questions, mostly experiential. I'm just curious. How does the council's vision or the mayor's vision influence or direct the scope of what it is you guys are setting out to do?
Well, we're going to start the project with a council where you share what you're hoping to achieve in ten years. And that, that'll be early enough before we do any, any technical work. And you'll, you'll get us kind of going in the right direction. And then we can come back to you with some thoughts a few months later and touch base about every two to three months.
Okay, so I'm clear. Council will be a just, will be part of the whole discovery process before you commence on anything.
Yeah, early in the process.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll gather some background reports and review them. But yeah, that's one of our first tasks. I think we had four also workshops plus about, you know, two other, at least two other opportunities. Six opportunities over the course of eight months or so.
Yeah, no, I was reading in there, there's and ors. And then there was a couple of moments where it was ors, like city and or council for council to be and.
Okay. Well, you know, every jurisdiction we work in is slightly different.
Sure.
Now, how often we come back to the council? And so they have to make it clear that we include plenty of opportunities to come back to you all during the course of this project.
And then your experience, and you have incredible amount of experience. So thank you for that, sharing that background. Has there ever been scenarios or outputs in your modeling when high density residential growth, at least at the rate in which we're experiencing here in North Bend? The output has been that it's a detriment to this, to the community? Or does it always come out with, okay, anticipate this growth and then here's how you're going to fund it?
Well, you know, the whole issue about residential versus Marshall, you know, has different implications. And the density is, is part of it. But generally, you know, as you grow in housing, you definitely want some more Marshall. Because housing tends to drain the general fund more than Marshall, you know, and adds or to the general fund. And that's why some of these new funding techniques like tax increment areas, it's an opportunity for the city to get, at least get some additional benefit of accommodating residence.
I just have two more questions and one will be specifically about the incremental, the spec, the special tax district. When thinking about all these different revenue sources and where my simple head goes is essentially retail revenue versus impact fees, for example. Is there a specific weighting criteria or something that you use to really help stimulate the modeling, meaning, you know, retail revenue seems more sustainable just to me than impact fees. It's kind of one and done. So are there different ways that you weight the different revenue sources in whatever it is for your outcome of your recommendations?
Well, when we get to a locally preferred funding plan, we're going to have all these these funding techniques in front of us, know how much they could generate every five, ten, twenty years. And then we have the opportunity to work also to weight it. And we could go off and, and come up with our own scoring mechanism and back you with recommendation. Or we've done some, you know, workshops where, you know, also swated individually. And we tally the result. I mean, there's so many different ways to do that. And so kind of an all hands on deck approach is what we have is we're going to look at everything. Now, we're not going to rule out anything. Then we're going to evaluate them with respect to sustainability of the funds, whether it can be used for capital and operating. The other, whether it can be used for different types of public facilities or just one. Generally, what is a market likely to support? Market being private sector developers. Are they more inclined to support a L I D or an impact? Or some other state excise tax? I don't know. And so I think that'll be our chance to back that.
When we review your revenue sources, for example, sales taxes versus property taxes versus business utility taxes, we'll do a deeper dive on each of those. So for example, your property taxes, we all know that. And where resources limited by growth by one percent per year. As part of that, we're in a lot. City has had the opportunity to achieve that, to recognize that one time bump from new construction. So we'll work with you and your planners to develop an estimate of a forecast that both an A V and how much new construction is out there and how that would add to your tax rolls. Sales taxes, typical approach on that is to, you know, I sales taxes on a per capita basis. So as your city population grows, how does that revenue stream, sales taxes with that population? And then within sales taxes, as you know, there are different segments. There's retail, there's construction related sales taxes. There's, there's sales taxes on, on grocers versus dealerships versus the type retailers. So we'll do a deeper dive on each of those different segments. Each of those segments are really individual animals.
Right.
Right. And then you, and as such, you would forecast each those separately. Utility taxes, we'll take a look at the revenue base that's generating your we taxes today. And if you were to increase your utility taxes, let's say one percent, what would that generate in terms of incremental revenues? Oh, yes, we'll be doing deeper dive on each of the different revenue sources and then you understand what are some of the levers you can pull to generate not just ongoing revenue sources to fund your additional own and just need to serve future growth, but also what are some of the one-time sources to one-time capital?
I like what I'm hearing is that it's not black box. It, it seems more collaborative, more organic. And there's a lot more of all of us working together to really understand the values and the inputs to get to what seems to be a realistic output. So I appreciate the thorough answer very much. My final question is quite simply, in, in going back to the reference, I, I wrote down notes, special district taxes, but it was incremental. Yeah, increment tax, increment areas. What sort of success rates have you seen with communities like ours? I'm really adopting those measures because I understand the, you know, the philosophy behind it and why it is a benefit, especially a certain, people in a certain area are receiving the benefit. As opposed to other people in different areas, why should those pay for it? But what sort of su- success rates and hurdles have you experienced that we need to contemplate in those? Because I, I liked that you brought that up and it seemed like a neat thing. So I just, I'd like to know a little bit more about that pursuit design.
Okay, so I think you're asking about the local improvement district, not the tax increment area.
Okay, so maybe I blended them.
So the L I D, local improvement district, sometimes it also be implemented as.
Yep.
If it's an L I D, there's a lien on the properties that are in the district until they pay their assessment. If it's a reimbursement district, nobody has to pay anything until they come in for development permits. And then the district expires in year fifteen. So if they don't develop, they never pay. If I was issuing debt, I'd want the L I D as, as a city protects you. You guaranteed you're going to get payment or you're going to get somebody's property.
Right.
If you're issuing the debt, you want an L I D. If a developer could also issue debt and get compensated back through an L I D. So you could use the developers financing instead of the city's financing with L I Ds. You actually succeed with that, need a couple of things. I mean, typically, that improvement has to be fairly large in the sense that one development probably couldn't afford it. It's going to benefit not just one property owner, several. And so, you know, but then all those property owners, at least the majority of them, will need to feel that that is a benefit to them.
Correct.
And they'll sign what's called a non-remonstrance agreement saying they won't appeal it. And then you really are protected to go ahead and adopt it. Now, you can adopt it and then they have to come to council and they have to have the burden of proof that they can feel it with the majority of property owners. So much cleaner if we just get them, we have large, three large property owners, just getting assigned a non-remonstrance. We develop the assessment with them at the table. So they know what they're, they have to pay. Sometimes it's a cost trip. There are allotted trips based on the development, one development. Now, if this area is going to develop, say five hundred dwellings, five hundred peak hour trips. We take that and we divide that as a pie among the cypians. And we use that to allocate the cost of the intersection improvement. Maybe that's a million dollar roundabout. And so they pay for it in equitable way. Maybe the city, because there's a benefit to the entire city, city uses some of its transportation impact fee money, pay for a match on that L I D. Maybe the city even is a conduit for the financing to pay for the whole L I D and get paid back through the special assessments. And so, you know, there's so many different ways to do it so that it's fair and equitable. And I, you know, our job is it's going to be to design it. It's just going to be to try to understand what's most likely to succeed. And we can meet with developers too. We, we, our property owners through this process and find out whether they're willing to, you know, are they, you're going to sit on the property forever? Or are they interested in seeing it develop? And then, you know, work with the city to come back, figure out whether that makes sense. Now, utility L I D is a special assessment with the utility rate.
Yep, unfamiliar with.
Is a little different than a standard L I D. So now, all these techniques have been utilized and we've worked with them on lots of different places. So they all work.
I just, when I think of lien on my house.
Yeah.
I don't know how I'm going to opt into that one.
Yeah. And typically.
It'd be a good benefit.
If it's a raw land L I D, mortgage lender is going to want to see that lien paid off or they
Yeah.
issue the note, maybe wrap it into the note. And so it works pretty well for our land.
Thank you.
We'll move to public comment. Does anyone here in city hall wishes to speak this item? Will be able to come to the podium? Have up to three minutes, starting with your name and address for the record, and then we'll move online and indicate in the chat box or by star nine who would like to speak. I guess we got somebody at the podium, so let's start there.
Hi, my name is Susan Torgason. My address is seven nine zero East North Benway. And my thought about this is as a property, property owner, I don't want my taxes to go up. So in the analysis, I would like to see more thought about tourism and how we can get more tourism tax to increase offers for the city to be able to pay for our bills. You know, how many hotels could we have that would help balance that out? So we'd like to see the analysis when they're putting it all together to kind of look at that. To keep our property taxes down. That's all I have. Thanks.
Anyone else here in chambers? Do you have anyone in line?
No one online.
This came through C E D, Mary, going to get the motion.
Yes, Mr. Mary, you certainly can. Motion to approve A B twenty-three dash zero nine four, authorizing mayor to sign a contract with F C S group. Fiscal sustainability analysis in the form and content approved by city attorney an amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars.
Second?
Second.
Motion is second by Mr. Lineback. Smiller, did you have anything to add?
I do briefly, and I really appreciate the commentary from my fellow council members tonight. I think in fact I am more comfortable with pushing this forward, supporting it if we can add those comments. Oh, my, thank you. Long-term planning is extremely important and we all know that. Doing it right is even more important. So identifying the risks and economic stability, that'll always be on top of the list and being transparent and accountable while we're at it. So I do recommend this to pass, all that being said.
Yeah, it's fun back, naming them.
You don't know what you don't know. So it's better to know. And these folks have been doing this a long time and they can give us the information that's going to be necessary to make informed decisions. And for us to take our individual opinions and help influence the process so that the outcome is something that we can use as a baseline moving forward to guide development.
Yeah, I had one more comment, please.
Yes, Smiller.
My apologies. I also liked what our Susan said earlier too. So if we could look into that as well and get that information, that'd be appreciative too. Thank you.
Sure.
My question's for Mr. Miller. I, I'm just, I'm still asked as to why this went to C E D and not F and A. I mean, this is revenue, financial sustainability. I mean, that seems like the proper process. So you explain a little bit on that.
Well, I think we originally started with this in the finance department and we had nobody shepherding it. And as we looked back at the scope and we narrowed the scope down, we realized how dependent this study was on the rate of development and the assumptions for economic development. And it in fact is an economic development action item coming out of the Economic Development Sustainability Plan. So really, this study I think is important enough for a committee of the whole. And I would not get hung up on which committee it goes through because I think you're going to end up with probably at least four public meetings that are similar to your work studies. And this is comprehensive enough that you all need to buy in to it and all need to go through it. But we had Mark Noel as the steward, as the project manager. But we had Mark Noel as the steward, as the project manager. He's in the community development department. And it really came, uh, as a recommendation out of the economic development action plan. So that's why we, I mean, we could have picked Public Works because of the infrastructure implications and rate studies. Uh, we could have picked finance because the financial implications. So, uh, really, we think it's probably a little more global than a committee. And that's why this has so many touch points with the entire council.
Well, to that end, um, and thank you for that response. Uh, it sounds like you could just pick and choose a committee based on what we're going to discover in here. I still feel finance is the proper panel. And to the point you just made that this is more global. Uh, should this have been something that was brought to us in a work study dynamic where we can weigh into it? Cause there's already scope that's being formed and I appreciate that we have four touch points along the way as articulated. Um, but there is visioning, there are certain things that I think it would have benefited specifically by a by a work study or as you say, more global feedback into what it is that we're doing, what's council's feedback, what's council's initiatives? Um, because ultimately it's coming, uh, through council.
Sure. I appreciate that. Uh, I think one of the things that we look at quite often is what is the structure we should bring to you with the technical expertise and the experience that we have working with folks like this in other cities? And I've, I've had the experience of doing this in several cities. So what you, what we wanted to do is to put enough structure together. When it finally gets to you, you have something to work with. As you can see, they're flexible in terms of scope. They're flexible in terms of which one of these alternatives is more preferable by the council. And if you look in the scope of work, you'll find that they have, I believe, at least four scenarios that they're willing to run or full, uh, input and output to show you under those development scenarios, what kind of revenues you'll get. So I think what we want to do is put together enough of the scope. It's not so much the contract that I think you're going to dig your teeth into. It's the work that they perform that is is pretty prescriptive. There aren't a lot of other ways to do it. You get so much from property tax, so much from sales tax. You have certain revenue options that are fixed. You have others that are elective. So if we put enough of this together where you know what your fixed options are, then you get into it when the real meat of the study comes to you rather than working back and forth on putting a contract together that really is is the work of professionals like this. When we stated what the issue was, that we wanted to know where we were over a twenty year period in terms of fiscal sustainability, that's the kind of work they do. They gave us the outline of how of how to get there. And then we bring it to you for your approval of the contract. If you want scope amendments, certainly have the opportunity for that here. And during the course of the study, you're going to be directing where it goes.
So when you say here, you mean council meeting tonight?
Right.
Okay. Uh, that's where I have even more issue, uh, with this being here tonight and not in a work study dynamic. There's also the issue of prioritization and timing. So I agree with your sentiment that this should have been a more holistic. Let's get introduced to this as a team. Let's look at this holistically. Let's discuss scope, what are interests, all the different types of things. See, I had a myriad of questions. I only asked four or five of them, right? Um, so I'm a little, um, agitated that it didn't go through the proper channels and I would like to see this.
Excuse me.
Bigger group dynamics.
Mr. Elwood, I I I don't, I don't think characterizing it as the proper channels is quite the way to describe it. It as was explained, there was solid reasoning for the committee it went through, but I think the the focus that I ask you to look at is is as Dave is just explaining, contract versus that's that's to get us so that you can all be in the room for hearing from the consultants, providing that feedback that I think you're very much looking forward to doing.
Thank you for that. And and I will attract the channel or whatever comment. It's the process of the committees, that particular process that I'm most protective of. Reason why I'm a little riled by it is because we've seen different things come through different community committees over time in the last couple of years. And it starts to put me on guard as to why that is. And so when I see something like this that is definitely revenue driven, fiscally centered on everything that we do, finance committee of which I'm a part of seems the best path, even though I understand that there are things that could go through public health, things that touches every part of the city. So pick a committee, go there. That's why I'm voicing my concerns that it didn't go through that particular plan or that particular process. Thank you.
I appreciate your comment. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, I agree with Mr. Elwood about where that went. That sounds like it should have been a finance. Uh, if you mentioned, this is where my concerns begin. I don't want to see E D because it was dependent on growth assumptions. And I'm concerned that we've already written scope based on growth assumptions that may not reflect the council's vision. And I fear that going to have a repeat housing action plan where the council was not part of the very beginning scope. Our vision, what we want to see ultimately is the policymakers needs to be a part of the scope. And already we're starting down this path without that consultation between council and the F C S group. I think you guys are going to do a great job. I have no issue whatsoever with ultimately awarding the contract. I just want the council to be a part of the very beginning of this scope. What is this council's vision? And there are differences I see in here right away. I mean, the very first slide talks about what's the city's growth potential, which sounds to me like how much can we grow? You may find that the council's position on growth is very different than administration. That's something that's ongoing. Maybe the council doesn't want to see a lot of growth. I didn't find anywhere in scope conversations about low growth, slowing growth. It is all about growth. And therefore, I think having a conversation with council will help you. One of the things that jumped out at me is there's a reference to uh, growth on the west side of town, exception of one council member up here. We've all clearly voted that down. That will not occur. Why it's already an assumption is concerning. And I think once again, a conversation with council will help clarify that. You, I don't think you've done anything on, but I just want you to get all the information so that when you start your studies, you can have some reference points from also your council, ultimately is the policymakers and have to vote. Um, you know, there's talks here about a lot of talk about taxes, raising taxes and raising taxes. There's, and this may be my pet peeve and the others will speak to it. But I didn't see any conversation in here that in the scope, talking about what can we do to reduce expenses? You help keep taxes down. It was, how do we find ways to increase revenue? Once again, listening to the council may have you change some of this or at least a little more aware of it as you write the scope. Um, let me make sure I've got most of my points out and I thank you for bearing with me. Um, yeah, a whole bunch of talk about impact fees. And those costs run counter to what a lot of this council and actually the administration is also trying to do with affordability. That those numbers, those add up quick and that scares me because I know none of us want to add to the unaffordability of housing. So that's also part of the conversation I'd like to have with you. Um, I believe that's going to cover most of it. As I said, I'm sure you guys are going to do a great job. I have no issues with you at all. And we'll certainly get the contract. I certainly be in favor of the contract. I just want you to have conversation with us on scope before we proceed. That's all I have to.
Yeah. What else? Go ahead.
I I'd echo my council members' concerns and I guess the the point I have is if we just take a look at your original slide, you don't really bring the council in till afterwards. And one of the things, you know, I would like see and have been asking is as a city where we are today, we had no growth today, where it is, how we can sustain it. I do have some concerns that we're focused a lot on additional taxes, additional property taxes. Um, we has have been as a community very conservative, tried to maintain low taxes here and built a commercial business, uh, to s- to support the taxes loan. Um, so my concern is, is that that is forward, seems to be for lower, big loaded conversation. Um, and and that I'm not sure that's how we want to move forward. Um, especially as we talk about what the cost of taxes are today. I mean affordability today, average citizen here is ma- is paying eight to nine thousand dollars a year in property tax. For people who are going to be on fixed incomes, who've built their their family here, may have paid off their house. It still may not be affordable if we continue to add on the sales tax. My concern is, A, where the touch point is to get us involved, where the starting point, and I do have some concern. I understand it's contract. The question is, is contract talks about things moving forward in a way that I think some of us are kind of feeling uncomfortable.
You? What else? Sir.
Uh, yes, very much appreciate your time. I'm supportive, uh, echoing Mr. Longback's comments, uh. Information is important. A what I'm receiving, I also want to say what I'm hearing here is agreement. No, everybody's agreeing. Might not feel like you that they're agreeing, but I think they're agreeing. Um, that this is important and the framing matters and how we got here matters as has been expressed. Governance is hard. There's reasons, uh, you know, that it doesn't about you. The difference is about which committee this came to isn't about you or this particular study, in my opinion, just your edification. Um. So what I, and I wanted to affirm that this did come through a committee. It was discussed. And one of the things that I took away from that meeting is that the baseline you're starting with is the current zoning. That one of the parts of the deliverables is to say that if nothing changes and nothing in the current zoning plan is rezoned, here's the utilities that you're going to need to support this many residential's and this much commercial growth and so on and so forth. Period. Am I, is that a fair assumption or that? That's in there. The do nothing scenario is in there. That's what they. It's not in the, it's not in the scope of work, but it's in the, it's these folks, I'm, they're trying to do an unbiased body of work on our behalf that says, look, folks, there's a bunch of scenarios that we run for you and you cannot talk about them. The sense that this is being brought forward with some pro-growth, you're missing that isn't the point. The reason it's about growth is because as was explained to us, growth is coming, is happening. We have some responsibility that takes some of it on that it isn't even, and if we do nothing, it's still there's some cost to the city. And so let's put on paper and document and learn about what those costs are and how we best as a responsible, uh, folks trying to govern and guide this city forward into the future. Working with information that's as best as we can have available to us. There's no better, you know, undertaking that the city can, you know, absolutely, that's on us to do that. And I'm thrilled and pleased that we are and I'll be supporting this. Um, that we, you know, and and this conversation is a good conversation. Here we go. But we really can't engage you in the conversation until we have in place a contract that recognizes that you're going to be paid for your services rather than tonight, which I expect you, I mean, I don't know what the arrangement is. It makes sense that you be under contract before you start taking input from us all. And that's what we're trying to put in place here tonight, if I'm not wrong. Um, yeah. And so there is more conversation. You're getting a flavor of how that's going to go. And I think that's great, but, uh, I suggest we move forward with this this evening. I'll be voting in support.
You. It's real.
And yes, my commentary was nothing to do with you. We, it's a process driven thing. I think you guys will do a great job. I mean, you're very detailed. You have the experience to do it. This is how things get through to us. And then suddenly we're here at a full council meeting to make decisions on scope and talk about all this stuff as opposed to work study, which to me would have been a more appropriate environment.
Make it, Todd, would you step to the podium? Step to the podium, Sue.
This is exactly why Mr. Miller wanted us here. Well, we can get this input. So when we do proceed, we'll proceed with an approach that's custom and that'll work. North Bend, we can't bring in a template that another city. We understand that. We'll make sure that we we proceed with the initial meeting, understand the vision, shared vision or the new, the different visions. Understand the no, the the law or no, the do nothing scenario versus some other scenario. Might involve up zoning somewhere. I don't know. Might involve need to attract more Marshall. I don't know. But that's, that's how we'll proceed.
Got a question. I have a question for you. I I appreciate Mr. Dawson's comment and the head nods that I saw in regard to the moving forward. The comments, I just, I was just curious, if anything that you heard, you felt was not within the scope, which you're already.
Great question. The answer is no. We we can make sure the scope, when we do actually will amend it to include a little more attention to the grants, uh, the grant opportunities. Uh, to make sure when we do our market work, we pay attention to the hotel motel potential, the community. Um, and then of course, the the council workshops don't, they're not at the end. They're all through the whole project. Make sure that's clear. Answers no.
Thank you. It's your God.
Well, I thank you for that because if you looked at the way the flow chart did look like it was at the end. So that's why it was my concern. And I think the council's trying to express is we want to have input into what's going to be provided because I think we have some you know, pretty strong ideas on what growth is and what, you know, potential and where we want it financed and where we don't.
Well, yeah, I'm going to give you, my, my conclusion i- is that this is great, uh, and I'm anticipating this is moving forward because I think it is going to give you the kind of insight and the answers that you're looking for. Uh, I perhaps more than anyone know that the whole word growth is a great boogeyman, scares everyone. Growth can be one home or it's one business. So business is also growth. So we've got a lot of decisions to make. And I think, uh, to Mr. Rosen's, uh, point as others, that's what the scenarios are for, so that we look at all of those things together. So I I think so we're moving in the right direction. With that, I'm sorry, Mr.
Just a clarifying question. Uh, with the concern of council wanting to be involved early on in scope. And we anticipate a meeting in the very near future before you continue your work. This is contract assigned tonight. How early is the council going to be in? When are we going to get to sit down with you? Okay, before you really start delving into this. Okay, that's the assurance I need. That's fine, but before the work starts.
Mr., I don't, I don't, I don't want Todd to inadvertently, um, uh, misspeak. I heard earlier, it said there is basic gathering, you know, data to gather. Yeah, meeting with you.
Yeah.
Meeting with council in a work study fashion is.
I'm just trying to avoid headaches later on where we get so far down the road and then we're taking things apart.
Absolutely.
So let's basically, let's all be brought along this journey together.
Together.
So that we end at destination as one. And I see no reason why we can't get there as a whole. I just want to be assured that we're going to be a part of it. Sounds like we will, and I appreciate that. Thank you for listening to our concerns tonight.
These details will allow us to hold hands together as we cross over the finish line and then we'll high five each other for the future of North Bend. So thank you.
I'd add, as as a famous person I've worked with before said, let's figure a way to get to a yes.
All right. Thank you, counsel. Okay, the motion before you is to approve A B twenty three dash zero nine four, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with F C S group for fiscal sustainability analysis in a form and content approved by the city attorney in an amount not to exceed ninety five thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving on, mayor, council administrator, concerns and initiatives. See, where have we not started? Mr. Goh Health, I think we'll start your end of the table tonight.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I I wanted to actually thank the group from coming forward and really thank this body for actually debating. And I think it's really important for us to let our citizens know that we take things seriously and we will openly talk about what we want to see and what we don't want to see. I think it's healthy that we do that. And so I want to just, now, also, we're getting the summer. Everybody begin to enjoy the weather and stay safe out there.
You, Smiller.
Thank you, everybody. Um, let's see, tonight we had the Snoqualmie Police Department National Night Out since Snoqualmie. Um, I managed to make it there for about an hour and was impressed by how everybody was, uh, super engaged, uh, lots of families were out. Uh, Bree, I know you were there and I couldn't find you, but, uh, thank you for being there. And, um, there's a reason why our interim police chief is not here or captain because, uh, he was in the dunk tank quite a bit. He got dunked probably 10 times in 20 minutes that I saw. What a hero. Um, Stephanie, our, um, also on our police force, uh, she got dunked prior, so I didn't get to see her. But I just want to say that was, um, a wonderful thing to have, uh, our first responders be so accessible, so full of, um, joy. I, you know, I talked to our new recruit, I guess, our new officer. In other words, uh, he was, this was his first day. What a joyous time to be out there in the community. So I think great things, of course, uh, search and rescue. They were there, all these wonderful people. Thank you for doing what you do day in, day out, and everybody have a safe night and be careful in the water.
You, Mr. Elwood.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to, um. Send another note of appreciation to Deb and Art and Industry. I, I'm constantly inspired by her and what that organization is trying to do with very little. Right? They seem to be coming up with a lot of cool clever ideas to keep things going and keep that momentum on. And I, and I really appreciate that. So of course she has my personal support. Um, and I look forward to supporting her in other ways. Um, I also want to thank, uh, the group that was here for enduring our kind of battering there. Um, but to me that, you know, I don't like having those type of conversations in this forum. I think a work-study is more appropriate. But since it was designed that way to have it, have it, fully, they can respect and understand that and they seem like experts and they do. Um, so I look forward to the sustainability outcome. I look forward to being a part of that process. I think it is a vital thing for our community, especially since we're growing so rapidly. So definitely on board, uh, with that particular journey. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Jocelyn.
Uh, nothing tonight. Thank you.
It's for Rosen.
It's from the short timers table. Um, step away and miss a meeting and this guy leaves. Um, I do just want to reiterate what Mr. Elwood said, which is this study is crucial. I don't think anyone here is debating that tonight. And I appreciate the fact that we're going to get that and that is going to be a huge asset to the city. And once again, I thank you for putting up with us and having this conversation. I think it's always helpful. That is all to me.
Mr. Longback.
Short timers table. I might just rescind it just to piss, just to get your goat. No, uh, no. Uh, I want to thank F C S group for coming, the Arts Commission, everybody. And thanks staff for being well-prepared and to welcome our new city attorney, Ms. Kendra. We're not always this lively. Uh, you know, many times where hours of boredom punctuated by moments of sheer terror. And, uh. That's the way we usually roll. But, uh, again, thanks to everybody who came tonight and participated and, uh, look very much forward to, uh, seeing what F C S comes back with. That's it, Your Honor. Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Miller, anything for the administration?
Nothing tonight. I've set it up for this evening. Thank you.
Uh, just a few announcements. I want to be sure to encourage everyone to attend the festival at Mount Si on August 12th and 13th. That festival features a full schedule of fun and activities for the whole family, including. Grand parade on North Bend Way on Saturday beginning at 10:30. And the return of the ever-popular fireworks show at Torgeson Park Saturday night. Have heard rumored that one of our famous valley singers is going to be at the event as well, but I won't say it just in case it's not true. Um, city is in the process of updating its comprehensive plan that was mentioned earlier this evening as well. A document that provides the framework, guide investments over the next 20 years. Helps to ensure that future projects are in line with the community's vision and goals. Find out more about this important update, including how to participate, dissipate. Please visit the news section of the city's website. And I think if you've been listening to the last conversation, you hear there's a lot of interest in the council. On what the future would be and what the, uh, community's visions and goals should be. City is also now accepting human and community services grant funding requests. From nonprofit organizations that serve the North Bend community. Find out more about the application process. Please visit the news section of the city website. Application deadline is September 1st. And with that. Uh, we will be, uh, ending the recording shortly. We, council is going to move into executive discussion. To discuss property acquisition pursuant to R C W forty-two dot thirty, uh, one ten, one E. And potential litigation pursuant to R C W forty-two dot thirty, one ten, one I. Expect to be approximately 45 minutes. No action will take place following that session.